Evening. We are reconvening for the October 2nd, 2024 Governing Board Public Session. It's 6:00 PM. Would you please stand for the Pledge Allegiance? A roll call, please.
Trustee Gardner.
Present.
Trustee Flores.
Present.
Trustee Anboi.
Present.
Trust, uh, Vice President Fox.
Present.
President Young.
Present.
Thank you.
Some plans, Pledge Allegiance, please.
Aye.
Hey, report of actions in the closed session. The board made enclosed sections and the received information, no action was taken. Adoption of Board Agenda. May I have a motion in a second to adopt the Board Agenda? Um, Christie?
I move to adopt the agenda.
Gardner?
I move.
trustee Fox?
Second.
It was moved by trustee Gardner and seconded by trustee Fox. Call for the vote.
Trustee Gardner.
Aye.
Trustee Flores.
Aye.
Trustee Anboi.
Aye.
Vice President Fox.
Aye.
And President Young.
Wow, aye.
Thank you.
Board Presentations, Grades and Programs, Memorandums, Community Acknowledgements and Recognition. Adoption of Resolution Number 5000, Recognizing October 2024 as Breast Cancer Awareness. Superintendent Aurelio?
Yes, so October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. It is recommended that the Governing Board adopt the Resolution Number 5000, Recognizing October 2024 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month. I'm gonna ask that trustee Gardner if you're willing to read our resolution.
I would be pleased to, as a breast cancer survivor. Whereas breast cancer is the second most commonly diagnosed form of cancer for women in the United States, with 310,720 new cases of invasive breast cancer expected to be diagnosed in women in 2024. And whereas breast cancer remains the second leading cause of cancer death among American women, it is projected an estimated 42,250 deaths will occur from breast cancer this year. And whereas approximately 2,790 cases of breast cancer are expected to be diagnosed in men in 2024. And whereas mammography and X-ray of the breast is recognized as the most effective method of detecting breast changes that may be cancer long before physical symptoms can be seen or felt. And whereas breast cancer incidence rates in the U.S. has slowly decreased since 1989 for an overall decline of 43% through 2020. And whereas researchers, scientists, numerous nonprofit organizations, and breast cancer survivors are dedicated to discovering the cure for breast cancer. During the month of October, we acknowledge the extraordinary commitment and effort invested in this cause and support those who are working towards a cure. And whereas we recognize the breast cancer survivors among us and honor their faith and courage, more than 4 million American breast cancer survivors today give us hope of a better future for those affected by breast cancer. Now therefore be it resolved, we hereby recognize October 2024 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month and encourage all Americans to learn the facts about breast cancer, invest in a healthy future by exercising regularly, maintaining a healthy diet, and limiting alcohol use, and obtain regular breast cancer screenings. It is in the best interest of all to join this continuing battle against breast cancer by promoting greater awareness of the need for early detection and appropriate treatment, and of the importance of finding a cure and a means of prevention. I'll make the motion to approve this, uh, this resolution.
Fox?
Second.
Call for the vote.
Trustee Gardner.
Aye.
Trustee Flores.
Aye.
Trustee Anboi.
Aye.
Vice President Fox.
Aye.
President Young.
Aye.
Thank you.
Adopted. Resolution adopted.
Resolution adopted. Our next resolution, Item 6B, is Resolution Number 5001, is in recognition of Filipino-American History Month for the Octo- for October of 2024. I'm gonna ask trustee Anboi to please read the resolution, if you will.
Thank you Superintendent. Filipino-American History Month, whereas October 18, 1587 is the earliest documented proof of Filipino presence in the continental United States as the first lasones indios set foot in Moro- Moro Bay, California. And the first permanent settlements of Filipinos in the continental United States in St. Malo, Louisiana occurred in the mid 1800s and between 1906 and 1935. The first wave of Philippine immigration began to work as farmworkers in California and the Mare Island workforce, all of which set in motion the economic, cultural, social, and other contributions that Filipino-Americans have made to our great nation. And whereas the Filipino presence in Vallejo dates back over 100 years starting with the nannies and servants of U.S. naval officers stationed at Mare Island after the Philippine-American War. And Filipino-Americans compromised the large workforce sector at Mare Island Naval Shipyard, contributing to the defense, economy, growth, and history of Vallejo. And today, according to the U.S. Census Bureau, multi-year trend, Filipino-Americans continue to grow, and they remain the largest Asian-American Pacific Islander group in Solano County, the second largest in California, and the third largest in the nation. And whereas the city of Vallejo and the community in Solano County have long recognized the contributions of Filipino-Americans, several of whom have dedicated many years of service as leaders with various government and private entities, local school boards, health and social workers, civil servants, military members, elected public officials, policymakers. And whereas the Filipino-American National His- Historical Society established the commemoration of October as Filipino-American History Month nationally and locally with the Filipino community of Solano County. And whereas efforts should continue to promote to the study of Filipino-American history and culture as mandated in the mission statement of the Filipino-American National Historical Society because the roles of Filipino-American and other people of color have been overlooked in the writing, teaching, and learning of the United States' history. Whereas the imperative for Filipino-American youth to have positive role models to instill in them the importance of education complemented with the richness of their ethnicity and the value of their legacy. Therefore be it resolved that this Vallejo City Unified School District to hereby designate October 2024 as Filipino-American History Month. And we encourage all members of our community to study the significance of Filipino-Americans, their chronicles, solid values, rich culture, enduring legacy, and the positive role models that they have proudly and humbly displayed in transforming the diversity and rich history of our historic and beautiful city and our nation. And I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Do we have a second? Um, trustee Fox?
I'd like to make a second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Gardner.
Aye.
Trustee Flores.
Aye.
Trustee Anboi.
Aye.
Vice President Fox.
Aye.
And President Young.
Aye.
Passes, great. Uh, Item Number 7, 6C, which is Adoption of Resolution Number 5002, recognizes the week of October 13th, 2024, excuse me, through October 19th, 2024, as the week of the Administrator. We ask the Governing Board to adopt this resolution. Vice President Fox and President Young, would you like to read the resolution?
We're gonna share it. Thank you. Vallejo City Unified School District Resolution Number 5002, recognizing October 13th through the 19th, 2024, as the week of the school administrators. Whereas leadership matters for California Public Education System and the more than 6 million students it serves.
Whereas student administrators are passionate, lifelong learners who believe in the value and quality of public education and?
Whereas the title "School Administrator" is a broad term used to define many education, leadership posts, superintendent, assistant superintendents, principals, assistant principals, special ed, and adult education leaders. Curriculum and assessment leaders, school business officials, officials, classified educational leaders, and other school district employees are considered administrators and?
Whereas providing quality service for students, success is paramount for the profession and?
Whereas most school administrators begin their careers as teachers. The average administrator has served in public education for more than a decade. Most of California's superintendents have served in education for more than 20 years. Such experience is beneficial in their work to effectively and effectively, um, efficiently, effectively and efficiently lead public education and improve students' achievement and?
Whereas public school operate with lean management systems. Across the nation, public schools employ fewer managers and supervisors than most public and private sec- sector industries, including transportation, food service, manufacturing, utilities, construction, publishing, and public administration and?
Whereas school leaders depend on a network of support from school communities, fellow administrators, teachers, parents, students, businesses, community members, board trustees, colleges and universities, community and faith-based organization, elected officials in districts and county staff and resources to promote ongoing student achievement and school success and?
Whereas research shows great schools are led by great principals, and great districts are led by great superintendents. These site leaders are supported by extensive administrative networks throughout the state and?
Whereas the state of California has declared October 13th through the 19th, 2024, as the week of the school administrators. In ED Code 44015.1 and?
Whereas the future of California's public education system depends upon the quality of its leadership.
Now therefore be it resolved that by the Vallejo City Unified School District that all school leaders be commended for the contribution they made to successful student achievement.
Make the motion to approve this resolution?
I second. Roll call, please.
Trustee Gardner.
Aye.
Trustee Flores.
Aye.
Trustee Anboi.
Aye.
Vice President Fox.
Aye.
President Young.
Aye.
And the motion passes.
Item Number 7A, Inter-Agencies, um, any agencies? None. Vallejo Education Association, BEA.
Report this evening.
California School Employees Association, CSEA.
I'll report this evening.
Vallejo School Management Association, BSMA. Okay, thank you. Reports of District Advisory Committee. There's no report for the District Advisory Committee. Committee members?
You have a card.
Community members, excuse me. Are we have one?
You.
Okay.
So Hazel Wilson, please.
Superintendent Aurelio. President Dr. Young. Vice President, Mr. Fox, and to the other board members. It is my pleasure to come before you. Excuse me. It is my pleasure to come before you today to report, um, that the, uh, local chapters of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated, Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated, and the NAACP. We have had the pleasure of doing voter registration and preregistration at Jesse Bethel High School last week and Vallejo High School yesterday. I would like to commend the administrators, the teachers, and the students. We did it for all the, um, government and economics classes. So we were on campus from first period to sixth period. We would like to commend the students on their behavior, their wonderful questions, and their interest in the process. It was a voter education presentation for each class, each period. Totally nonpartisan, just encouraging the students to know that their voice is their vote and how they can affect education, housing, the economy, civil rights. So I like to tell the positive story. When the children are doing well and the schools are doing well, I like to tell that. It's very important that something is heard besides negativity. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We have one more? This is Tamala or Tamala? Tamala Sullivan, if you can come up to the microphone?
I'm difficult because I did put a request in for interpreter last week, two emails I sent. So I don't know who dropped the ball. So. Anyways. So I'm gonna try to sing calm, which is like trying to speak Spanish and French at the same time. It's hard. So. We, we work at Penny Cook, and we've been having some issues related to interpreting services. And so we are curious as to how the school district as a whole screens interpreters from the agencies that you pay a lot of money. Unfortunately, I looked at your board packet too late because it was on the packet two weeks ago for your purchase order. Yikes. So, um, you guys are paying a lot of money for interpreters that are, mm, that don't actually meet the ED Code. There is a ED Code, um. So it's California Code of Regulation CCR, Sections 3051.16 and 3065. That's related to, oh, yeah, to interpreters for the deaf and hard of hearing students. There are some state requirements that are, need to be met and are supposed to be met even by agency interpreters that are hired by the LEA. So we are, so we're kind of just curious to how that screening process happens. Who has control over scheduling and calling and, um, that kind of thing? Yeah, half the interpreters don't have the required certifications. So that kind of, it's caused a lot of issues at our site, unfortunately. So barring anything else, trying to figure out how to get help, I, that's, we're here. So thank you very much for your time.
And thank you. And just, just to, we can't really comment back, but I do, staff is here and we will make sure to connect with you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
No student reports. Okay, number eight, consent items. May I have a motion in a second to approve consent items eight through eight, 8A through 8I? Uh, trustee Fox?
Like to make a motion to approve consent items 8A through 8I.
Trustee Anboi?
Um, I have a comment before I make my approval. Um, I, I do want to focus back to my comment on, on, in the last meeting. And some of these, um, items that we are approving, I would hope to get that taken care of in the summer versus taking care of it now. It's just, again, it's just more, for me, it's more important that we do all those approvals at the, in, in the summertime versus now, just to, uh, I just want to reiterate that, so. But I do approve. I second.
Okay. Acknowledged.
Thank you.
So. Are we ready for roll call?
Roll call.
Ready for roll call. Roll call, may I have a vote?
Trustee Gardner.
Aye.
Trustee Flores.
Aye.
Trustee Anboi.
Aye.
Vice President Fox.
Aye.
And President Young.
Aye.
Passes.
Even, oh, okay, action items?
So action items, so Assistant Superintendent Topasio will introduce Resolution 4089 and answer any questions from the trustees. This item also requires opening of a public hearing prior to the adoption.
Good evening, Governing Board, President Dr. Young, Superintendent Aurelio, Mr. Fox, uh, trustee Anboi, trustee Flores, and trustee Gardner. I come before you with, um, our Resolution 4089, to certify instructional materials adopted for the use of this school year are compliant, meaning that students have the adequate instructional materials in the classroom.
Thank you. Um, open, we're gonna open up the public hearing. Um, the time is, um, 6:25. We're opening up the public hearing for Resolution Number 4089. Are there any public on this item?
Comments?
The public hearing is closed at 8:26. May I have a motion to adopt the Resolution Number 4089, certifying that instructional materials adopted by, for use in 2024, 25, are legally compliant? We have a motion. I, trustee? Trustee Fox?
Make a motion to adopt, uh, Resolution 4089.
Second, please. Trustee, uh, Flores.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Gardner.
Aye.
Trustee Flores.
Aye.
Trustee Anboi.
Aye.
Vice President Fox.
Aye.
President Young.
Aye.
And the resolution passes.
Thank you Assistant Superintendent.
Then, uh, action item number 11, report. Superintendent?
Good evening, Board Members.
Have the mic.
Okay, Staff and Community. I'm proud to begin by sharing the incredible work that Assistant Superintendent Topasio, Director of Cataclysmal Programs, Cassie Gossett, and I presented last week at the inaugural Moving the Needle Session at the California Department of Education. We highlighted our district's unwavering commitment to ensuring every child receives quality engagement and instruction in their classrooms. The presentation demonstrated how we are making strides in student outcomes and instructional practices aligning with our district's pillars for excellence. Additionally, we were able to share how we utilize target, the target budgets, uh, sorry, the budgets to target to ensure our neediest students are getting what they need to succeed and meet the goals of our Portrait of the Graduate. I also want to acknowledge the strong partnership we've built with the California Collaborative for Educational Excellence, CCEE, and the Solano County Office of Education, SCOE, as otherwise known. Last Friday, these partners provided an update to the State Board of Education and legislative staff on our collective progress. Highlights of that update included the smooth transition of our senior leadership team ensuring stability at this pivotal time, expansion of our community of practice with district leaders fostering collaborative growth across our schools, the continued development of professional learning plan, which is now expanding to address secondary literacy, and increased accountability measures and a more strategic use of data to drive decisions, capacity building for leaders to engage in data-driven dialogue, which is having a direct impact on classroom instruction. Additionally, I want to emphasize the success of our first learning walks of the school year. Over two days, site and district leaders had the opportunity to visit classrooms across all school sites. This collaborative effort allowed us to cal- to calibrate and reflect on what we observed, reinforcing our commitment to instructional quality and student engagement district-wide. These actions are in direct alignment with Pillars 1 and 3 of the strategic plan. Lastly, I want to remind everyone that this Saturday is the highly anticipated rivalry football game between Vallejo High and Jesse Bethel High School. I look forward to seeing our students, staff, and community come together for a day of school spirit and competition. I'll be there to present the Superintendent's Cup, I think that's the JV Cup, and I encourage everyone to join us for what promises to be an exciting event. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we move on to the Board Members. Trustee Fox?
Okay, for my report, the first, Dr. Young and I attended on Monday the County School Board Associations Meeting, and we were talking about, um, continuing having a discussion about reading and intervention and benchmarks. And we're thinking of having, continuing from what we presented in May. Superintendent Topasio, hope you're hearing. In January, we're thinking of doing the follow-up, the end of January, Monday, January 27th, to see how those benchmarks and how reading intervention has progressed through this new school year with updates. So that'll be, um, we're planning that out again for the next few months. And I attended the two-by-two. I'm gonna let trustee Gardner discuss that. And, because I usually talk about it. And I think that's it for my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Gardner?
Okay, the two-by-two was held on September 19th, and both Mr. Fox and I were in attendance along with Superintendent Aurelio. And it was, um, actually, it was a pretty good agenda. We, we, we heard from a representative from I-Hart, which is the non-emergency 911 calls. So those would be like the paramedics and, and other, um, emergency personnel that are not related to the police. And they, they basically go out if a call is like a, um, a, a, a person that is, is having a mental, um, issue. And so that they would go out and respond to that rather than having the police officers respond, which is really what we should be doing. So I think that was a very interesting discussion that we had there. We also heard from our district representative, and I cannot remember her name, I'm sorry, the McKinley Vento.
Kelly Santos, Ms. Kelly Santos?
Kelly Santos. And that was a very detailed conversation or presentation that she gave with regards to the numbers of, of district students that are McKinley Vento students and the services that we provide for them. And actually, I would like her to come to one of the board meetings and present for the board, so that's skipping down to the next agenda items. And then we also heard from Victoria Grace Barksdale, the Youth Coordinator for the City of Vallejo. And she talked about the League of City Schools, um, the new, the, the next event that our students will be attending. And I know that they have applications in and will be going through the applications to select two students from, from each of the high schools and I think one student from Finney, um, that will represent Vallejo City Unified and Vallejo, the city of Unified, or the city of Vallejo when they go back to the, where is it this year? I, I have the.
It's in Tampa, Florida.
It's in Tampa, Florida. So, um, I will volunteer myself for a chaperone, but I don't know that they'll take me up on that offer.
I second that.
So that was a very, that's been a really interesting program for our kids to get involved with, and I, I think it's only gonna grow. So I'm very excited about this, and I'm excited to go through the applications. I haven't yet done that. That was pretty much. Um, that was pretty much it. We've asked, I think, did we ask about the certificate of occupancy? We asked that that be, uh, placed on the agenda for the next time to, to really kind of determine how we can get title to this building. Um, I think that that's in the best interest of the school district. So that should be on an upcoming agenda and the next meeting is gonna be sometime in October. It was October, we just got twenty-eighth. So that is, yes, on a Monday this time and it will be in the, the, um, Vallejo City Hall, the, yeah. Okay, and that is my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Gardner. Trustee Flores.
Uh, just a few things to report on, um. Like this is gonna be a very busy weekend. Have, just wanted to, uh, touch on. We have the Vallejo Waterfront Weekend happening and the reason I'm bringing that up is because, uh, I don't know if some of you all noticed that there's been a lot of um, outreach to Latino community this go-around. So I believe the Latino Parent Network will be down there, Ser Latino, I believe, is gonna be down there. So, um, if you get a chance, please stop by the booths, get information, volunteer. It's not just for Latino families, but we are trying to engage in them a little more. Um, additionally, that same day, they are, an organization called the Time is Ya Network. Um, the ya meaning now, uh, in Spanish, so the time is now, but the time is ya. Uh, Network is hosting their very first, uh, Latino in Education Conference in Vacaville. Um, I was invited and, and I accepted and I requ- to be on their panel, uh, of educators and Latinos involved in education. So that, the panel will be, I believe, at ten AM. Uh, the, the event itself runs from nine-thirty in the morning to one PM. So I'll be participating with that as well. And, um, the other thing was I was, uh, contacted from the, one of the organizers from the, um, PLTI, Parent Leadership, um, Training Institute, saying that she had a really good, um, meeting with, uh, with you Superintendent Aurelio. And, and I'm really hoping and looking forward to seeing them have a cohort here out of Vallejo on one of our sites. So with that, that's all I have to report. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Flores. Trustee Amboy.
Uh, I wanted to thank, um, um, Mitch Romeo, um, along with Valeria and all the, their entire team regarding the, uh, the measure S. I had the students, uh, or the, the girls', uh, tennis team, uh, reach out to me. And, um, they were excited to actually see that their courts have been, uh, refinished. And they were so excited when, um, when the, when it was actually done, they ran up the hill. And they were taking pictures and they, they, they kept, they sent, they sent me all these pictures. They just blew up my phone, which is kind of, kind of funny. Um, but they, but what, what had made it even more funnier was, um, they were upset at the birds just make, uh, droppings on, on the court. And like, oh my God, they, they have bird dropping and it was just, I just, I thought it was funny. But again, I do wanted to, um, the courts looks bea- beautiful. If anyone has an opportunity to stop by Bethel and take a look at the courts, um, and see that our measure S money is working, um, working to the benefit. Um, but that is all of my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I, uh, also attended, uh, the, uh, County Board Association, uh, meeting with, um, trustee Fox, um. And, uh, it was a very productive meeting, I think. We have a lot of work to do and, uh, very few volunteers to do it, but we're gonna get it done. But that, that's my report. Okay. Community forum if needed, and, oh, one, okay.
We do, we have one community forum.
Okay.
Uh, Nestor Aliga, please come to the podium.
Suck that one in on me.
Good evening, President, uh, Dr. Young, Vice President Fox, trustee Amboy, trustee Flores, and trustee Gardner, and Superintendent Aurelio. Uh, my name is Nestor Aliga. I live in Vallejo. I'm actually class of nineteen seventy-four, Vallejo High School. I am here to thank you for adopting the Filipino-American History Month Resolution. Thank you so much. You know, we, as you probably know, the demographics here in Vallejo schools, we have so many Filipino-Americans, but we don't want to focus on that. We want to focus on in, being inclusive and thinking as a whole, as a community. So thank you so much. Uh, secondly, uh, I am a member of the Disabled American Veterans and, um, we will be having a scholarship, um, flyer coming up for all Vallejo students that are, uh, from veteran families to apply for our, uh, scholarship. It'll be around, oh, I think, one thousand for a first prize, uh, seven fifty for a second prize, and five hundred dollars for a third prize. And it'll be for students to write an essay about veterans. So again, thank you so much and, um, I will probably be here either late October or early November to, uh, beg you to adopt my veterans', our Veterans Day, uh, resolution, which I will be sending to Ms. Thomas, um, this week. And thank you so much for being so responsive when I send out emails. I know you get thousands of emails. So, uh, lastly, uh, I had, um, sent, given you some flyers and you are all invited to an event at the Vallejo Naval Museum this Saturday, October fifth, six thirty-nine to nine PM. And we will have a Filipino feast, uh, with, uh, lechon, which is a roasted pig, and, uh, some dancing and, uh, uh, we do beg you to please, um, spread the word because our ticket sales are not as, doing well as we were hoping it would. So if you could, uh, support us, we would really, really appreciate it. Uh, thank you so much again.
Thank you. We don't need a closed session? So, number fourteen, announcements for upcoming meetings.
Sure, October ninth, uh, is our next seven eleven committee meeting. It is held here in the Governing Board Room at five PM. October sixteenth, twenty twenty-four is our regular Governing Board Meeting. October twenty-third is the third session of the seven eleven committee, five PM in the Governing Board Room. October twenty-eighth is the next, uh, two-by-two meeting with the city of Vallejo and the Governing Board. A representation, that's at the JFK Library. And that's typically, it's a different day than we usually have. It'll be a Monday for October. And then October twenty-ninth, as a reminder to the Governing Board, we are going to do a special Governing Board Meeting as, uh, sort of, as we get to the end of the seven eleven committee. So a study session for you all.
Thank you. Future board agenda items. Some future items can be mailed or discussed with, uh, Superintendent Aurelio. Um, does the board have anything they wanna, they can just, oh, those lights come on, ooh. Um, trustee Flores, I think he had the first one.
Just, just me. Oh, and, uh, I just wanted to find out, um, if, if any of the Vallejo schools, uh, whether it's, um, Vallejo High or Bethel would be able to host, uh, the SATs. Um, I know a bunch of, I had, um, comments from some of the students saying that they had to, um, that none of the Vallejo schools were of it, were pointed out that and they had to go to, one had to go all the way to Sacramento, had another's, a couple of other students went, uh, was going to Concord. Um, I just don't think that would be right for ours, our, our scholars to be traveling that far just to, just for the SAT. Also possibly, um, other thing I was think, um, hoping to do, I, is, um, I know that we, we, we have ways that we're a- actually paying for the AP to, AP exam. Um, maybe if there's a way that, um, somehow we can cover maybe the cost of the SATs or the P, uh, PACTs, um, as well. Because I think that would be, um, that would actually help or, or give, give our scholars an opportunity, um, another oppor- opportunity for us, so.
Okay, any other? Okay, at this particular time, this meeting is adjourned at six forty-four. Forty-four, six forty-four?
Forty-two.
Forty-two.